Welcome everyone to the briefing meeting of the West Jordan Planning Commission. The date is July 16th, 2024. All commissioners are present except Commissioner Allen and Commissioner Thomas. Let's have a quick review of the agenda for tonight. We have a, I assume we have some training. We will review the minutes. That's item number one. Item number two is the Q E S Skyhawk application. Item number three is the Jordan Valley Station application. And this is sort of a short agenda. Any of the commissioners have any questions or items for the, this briefing meeting? Does the staff have anything for this briefing meeting? Just the training? Then let's proceed with that.
All right, so today, as you can see by what's on the screen in your handout, I'm going to talk to you about development agreements and zoning conditions. Nothing sounds like fun if it's not development agreements and zoning conditions, right? And they, they are terms that are a little nebulous. Sometimes we don't fully understand what they might entail. And so hopefully at a minimum today, I might at least give a little bit more clarity about what they are, when we can use them, when we can't, that kind of thing. So, and in the context of that, remember that everything you do as a planning commission, like we've talked about before, you're either in your planning commission role where you're planning in advance, doing the general plan, recommending city code text amendments, those kinds of things, zone changes. Or you've got your land use authority hat on and you're simply acting on the, an application and implementing and using those, that general plan, that city code that's already in place, right? You're always wearing one hat or the other. And a lot of times we wonder, well, where is the law, right? Is it, is it in state code? Is it state court case law? Is it in our city code? You know, where is it? One of the neat, and then, and how nuanced is it, right? And the cool thing about, we really like it when you wear hats anyway. Having a variety of hats is really good. So thank you for wearing more than one hat. Yeah, they have at least two, Mary. You might have like 500, but they've got two anyway. So the idea, the thing to keep in mind is some areas of law are difficult or nuanced, or you have to go different places. The cool thing about development agreements in particular, there's literally one code section in the Utah code that has most everything about development agreements. Now granted, there's state appellate court decisions that give you a little bit more information, but really it's one main code section. And what's really good about it is this is one area in the Land Use Development Management Act, LUDMA, where the legislature actually has it, so it's internally consistent and it really makes sense. And just this is recorded, but that's what I think. So the only thing is, is they are just a little bit redundant. Instead of having one list of what you may put in a development agreement and one list of what you may not put in a development agreement, they have two of each list, which is kind of weird to me, right? If I had a list of my favorite food, it would all be on one list. I wouldn't make two lists of favorite food. I, I don't know, I don't get it. But there's gotta be maybe two sets of authors and each one of their own list. I'm not sure. But other than that, it is really easy to read and understand once you kind of get a feel for it. The only other thing that I feel makes it easier to understand is a lot of times in the Utah code, we just have a whole bunch of writing, but the headings aren't necessarily helpful, right? And so the yellow highlighting on the screen, or I guess it's gray on your handout, because I used grayscale printing. This, those are my headings, right? That I added to make it simple. And so you'll see in this code section 1098532, which is the development agreement section in state law, the first subsection there is the first list of what a development agreement may be used for, right? And, and basically it comes down to the things that we know, right? Every time there's a master plan development, somebody comes in with a development agreement slash development plan, then we know there's an MDA that goes with it, right? That, that goes with the development plan. The MDA goes hand, or the regular development agreement goes hand in hand with that development plan. You can also have an MDA with an annexation or sometime when there's additional density allowed. And the density, additional density normally comes in context with a zone change, right? And a lot of times we have that zone change and master development plan slash master development agreement at the same time. So that, there, there's a couple of other things on that list, but those are the main things that we use a development agreement for, right? And then the, what a development agreement may not be used for, and you can kind of sum up the, that language there and basically say, look, you can't limit a city council in the future, right? A city council can rezon something different in the future. They can choose to not do something or do something now or later. You can't make the council agree to do something later. You basically can't take away the city council's discretion, right? With a development agreement is what that says. And sometimes, almost every single development agreement requires council approval, but there are certain times, like if there's a reimbursement agreement and the city council has already identified, here's this money to put in this water line or to upsize this water line. And a developer's doing a project anyway. And the mayor can just sign the agreement as long as we can pinpoint the budget. Yep, there's where the council appropriated the money for that project. And all the mayor and staff are doing is just implementing what the council already did. That's not a legislative decision, right? Because the legislative decision already happened. The reimbursement agreement is just finishing it. So there are certain times you have, there's a little nuance there. Certain development agreements, if they're not creating a new policy or spending new money, but it's already happened by the council and we're just following through, that's, that's not a legislative action, right? So then you got the additional situations that a development agreement may be used for. It's kind of a little overlapping with the one above, but it makes it clear that a zone change, right? Can be, the development agreement can be used with a zone change or obviously an amendment to the development agreement. And then going on to the next page, the, the second list of what a development agreement may not be used for. And it's basically if somebody's development, proposed development is already, has everything spelled out in the city code and they don't need a development agreement to fill in the gaps, then, you know, the city can't require a development agreement, right? Because they don't need one. And if they don't want one, then we can't make them have one, so to speak, right? Because, and this really is a lot of what we're talking about with development agreements. In our case, especially here, is we look at whether it's a Euclidean zone or a non-Euclidean zone. And the Euclidean zone is where all the rules are spelled out. It's like an R18 or an R110 zone and lots have to be at least 8,000 square feet or 10,000 square feet. And literally there's tables and charts that show maximum height requirements and bulk standards and lot and bulk standards, all that stuff. There's nothing that we need a development agreement for, right? It's all spelled out in the code. As opposed to a non-Euclidean zone, where you need to have a development agreement. In fact, the code specifically requires one. And I made kind of a list where it's PC zone, PRD zone, city center zone, the old west side planning area, integrated housing, southwest quadrant, a bunch of overlay districts like IOZ, SHOT, SOD, infill, are some of our zones and, and overlay zones where we specifically require a development agreement, right? And the reason we can require it is they can either, A, go under the existing zone. And let's say the existing zone is R18 or R110, and then they don't need a development agreement. But if they want to rezone to one of these zones, which I didn't list for you, but, I thought of it after I printed this. But if they want one of those zones, like southwest quadrant or IOZ or city center zone, if they want to rezone to one of those zones, then what we're basically saying is, okay, in return for the planning commission recommending the council considering this zone change, then, you know, you'll need to enter into a master development plan and agreement and fill in some of the details that aren't 100% spelled out in city code, right? Because these, those zones that I just mentioned that require an MDP and an MDA don't have 100% of everything spelled out, right? That's part of the give and take and the negotiation of what ends up in the plan and the agreement. So it's not that in that situation, the city is forcing the applicant to have a master development agreement. They're basically saying you can move forward with your existing zone, but if you want the zone change, city code requires an MDA. But it's not forced. It's only, they've got options, right? Option A, option B. But if they choose option B to rezone to a non-Euclidean zone, then they, the city code requires that development agreement. And that's typically the main thing when we're looking at development agreements. We can't force people generally to go into them unless it's built into our code, right? If our code requires it, or if they're coming to us for something that it's not necessarily disallowed by the code, but the code doesn't spell it out, then they can choose to ask the city, hey, you know, city, we'd really like to have this item A and we're really, and we're willing to give B or something else in return. Would you be willing to look at a development agreement? Then we can do a development agreement, right? So it's either A, required by the code and they choose that zone, or B, they have some other issue that's not completely spelled out by the code and they're asking for it. And what's the common link between those two main ways that we get a development agreement? The common link is they asked for it, right? They're asking, the applicant is asking for the zone change, or the applicant is asking for a development agreement to fill in some details that aren't in the city code. So, and that's where sometimes people get a little backwards. It's, we can't require a development agreement. It's usually almost like 95% of the time, right? It's initiated by the applicant. They're asking for the zone change. They're asking for what's not set forth in the code. I mean, the other 5% of the time is probably us as a city saying, hey, you know, we really think, Mr. Applicant, that you ought to consider doing an MDA. But it's still their choice, right? What becomes not a choice is once they choose the zone change that the code requires it, right? Then, but that's because we've put it in the code. Hopefully that makes sense. And then there's an issue of, yeah.
What's the disadvantage or advantage to choosing? If they want to do something creative, choosing an MDA or not choosing an MDA? I mean, keeping with the Euclidean or going with the non-Look? Is there an advantage to a developer in picking one or the other?
Yeah, I mean, I think it really boils down in my mind to what is it they want to do with their property, their application, their project? And does it match up nicely with one of our Euclidean zones? Or does it better match up with a non-Euclidean zone? And if so, then they want an MDA, they have to do an MDA with it, right? I mean, if I was an applicant and I saw that there was a regular Euclidean zone that offered me everything I needed, I'd just run with that. It's easier, right?
Yeah, it's, it's time predictability, right? Real estate's really uncertain and, and there's, there's high risk, high reward. And we've all heard the, the phrase, time is money. It, it might, to Mr. Murray's point, it might be beneficial if, if, you know, a Euclidean zone or predictable zone checks most of the boxes. Hey, it's worth just going with that, that recipe. It's, it's there, it's predictable. I know kind of what, what I'm going to get versus trying to negotiate the, the finer details, which, you know, our PC, PRD zones, our IOZ, all of that. They might get a higher yield, higher, you know, higher density, but it might take them a whole lot longer to negotiate those deal points.
Yeah, no, I think that's well stated. So, you know, I mean, the advantage to the non-Euclidean zones is they're adaptable, they're flexible. But like Mr. Langford says, a lot of times it takes a lot longer, right? To put that development together to, before you can have it shovel ready.
Can I jump in with a question really quick too?
Yeah.
So in my day job working for the county assessor, I kind of do a lot with, with development agreements and so on. And one of the issues that we have that, that you kind of touched on with reference to the Euclidean versus non-Euclidean is that with everything spelled out in a Euclidean zone, it's really easy to figure out things like minimum lot size.
You just go right to the table and look it up and there it is.
So with the development agreement, obviously that's uncertain before the development agreement gets signed. But shouldn't that be more certain once the development agreement is in place? And if so, is there a convenient and easy way to find that? Because I spend an awful lot of time digging through development agreements, trying to figure out what the minimum lot size is. And it's usually, it's usually ambiguous, like 5,000 square feet for a single family home.
Right.
Or 3,000 square feet per unit for multifamily or 1,000 square feet per unit for attached.
And we try to have main templates that we use, but they tend to evolve over time. Some developers want a slightly different format or we adapt slightly to what they want. We try to keep the MDAs as similar as possible so that staff can figure it out. The, still the starting point is the code, right? I mean, if, if somebody's choosing a PRD or PC zone, for instance, technically that's non-Euclidean. It requires a development agreement, but there are still a lot of, there are still some lot and bulk standards, right? Scott, there's, so you can go there and go, oh, well, it's got building heights or whatever. I can't remember what's in there. There's a few of those kinds of things that are in there. And you go, oh, I don't even need to look at the development agreement there. That's there. And then, but if it's not there, then you're like, oh, okay, I guess I better look to the MDA for that one. So that is the other disadvantage in a way is you have to look back and forth between two places, right? There's the, the zone that deals, the zone in the, the language or chapter or article that's in the city code dealing with that zone, plus the MDA for that development or kind of your two documents, right? That you're looking at, so.
Is there a specific place in MDA that should be spelled out or is it kind of free form and?
It's kind of free, but I mean, the typical layout of an MDA is, yeah, sometime before the city, yeah. I mean, it's, it's the typical order of an MDA is the first page is, hey, here's the name of the development and the name of the developer. And here's how many acres and the address and the maximum number of units and maybe the list of the exhibits, you know? And then the next few pages are probably the main meat of here's what the developer agrees to do. Here's what the city agrees to do and some definitions maybe. And then you get into a few more details and then you work your way to the boilerplate at the end. That's almost the same for every development agreement. And then you have, yeah, signature pages and then attachments or exhibits. Oh, yeah, exactly. Yeah. And so that's a good point that Julie's making is one of the main exhibits or attachments, and sometimes the only exhibit or attachment to the development agreement is the development plan. And it's not unheard of that you have a development agreement that's only 10 or 20 pages long and the development plan is 100, right? And together they're all one document. In theory, they're all the development agreement. But most of the ultimate level of details, and we're working our way in a long roundabout way to the best answer with Julie's help, is that where the detail is, is it's in the development plan usually, right?
But I feel, I feel your pain, but, but Ms. Murray's right. Gratefully, you know, over time, we, we've learned a few, a few things. And gratefully, when a developer comes to propose something for West Jordan, we, the city are the ones that provide the template and the, the, we're, we're the driver. They're, they're asking for, but we, we've got a, a set template generally that we've, we've refined over time and, and we go with that. I know in, in many other municipalities, and you've seen this firsthand, it sounds like, the developer comes to the city and says, hey, I've got this, this template and this, I've hired an attorney. And it, it's completely different. And, and you get, that's probably John, where you see so many different Easter egg hunts, right?
Yeah, it is, it is very interesting across municipalities. Some, some handle it really well, like West Jordan's kind of middle of the road. And then some like harem minutes, freaking nightmare.
That's where you just pick up the phone and say, hey, I need to talk to a planner.
Yeah.
Help me find this.
Yeah, and that's the reason I asked that was kind of thinking in hopes of like, maybe my personal issue can help steer us to,
Yeah.
to do a better job of that.
So the main development agreement is pretty similar every time. It's our template, like Mr. Langford mentioned. Although the development plan with a lot of the details of the height and possible floor plans and, you know, all of those kinds of things, the development plan, a lot of times the developer has most of the flexibility in putting that together, right? The, the project managers, the planners will give them a lot of guidance and kind of structure a little bit. But yeah, for the most part, the development agreement, the main development agreement itself is the city's document. And the attached development plan with guidance by the city is more created by the developer. And then it gets attached to the development agreement.
May I interrupt again?
Yeah.
Is there a trend? I remember years ago, we had someone come and talk to us about Euclidean versus form based. And that form based allowed for multiple styles of homes and multi-level, I mean, multi-family and single and all like, like Daybreak. And that, that is really a preferred method just because it doesn't separate economic strata and all that other stuff. So is there a trend that's happening to go towards that form based planning?
I, I think especially for the larger developments, you know, anytime you see 100 acres or more, certainly if it's 2, 3, 400 or more, that it's, you're almost shocked if it's not form based or non-Euclidean. If it's an infill or smaller, you know, less than 10 acres, you're maybe not shocked if it's a regular straight Euclidean, R18 or R110 kind of zone. So yeah, I, I think, and the reason being is I think over time, especially as we're pushing at the foothills, we've got weird terrain and slope issues. And it makes sense that form based is more likely, more flexible and adaptable to be able to, we don't have.
Real, real quick, before you go too far down that road, Taylor, you want to clarify something?
Yeah, I, I did want to clarify a little bit. I think what Duncan's talking about is more like performance zoning. Form based code looks at the, the aesthetics of a structure, but not necessarily the use. So it could be commercial, office, residential, all mixed together. And so you typically see those types more in more urban environments. So when we're looking at our stationary plans, it's very likely that we'll have some element of a form based code there because we'll be going for a built environment rather than the use. And we want those uses to mix vertically and horizontally. So in those more urban settings, you're going to see more form based than the Euclidean or performance zoning, which we see in the more suburban portions of the city.
Yeah, Daybreak or, or Wood Ranch, to get a local example, is, is that performance based? Or new, newer urbanism? You don't hear that as much anymore, but that, that there is a distinct difference with form base. So I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, that'll teach me to use words I don't fully understand as if I was a planner.
I won't practice law.
Thanks for the clarification. That's why I stuck with the terms Euclidean and non-Euclidean in my document, because I know what those mean. But so the other part of page two there is what you can record in the county recorder's office or what you shouldn't record. We can record these MDAs, right? And the ordinance approving the zone change and so forth. We can, and we do, we record all that stuff because all the relevant parties, usually just two parties, but it could be more, agree on it, right? Maybe it's three, if there's an owner and a developer in the city. But all the applicable people signed and we go record the thing at the county recorder's office. We can also record code enforcement, right? If somebody has a code enforcement issue and they're not following city code, whatever the resulting document is, we can go record that. And there's a couple of other things. But what we should never record is, is something where we're imposing some kind of development requirement on a developer that he or she is not a party to, right? That they weren't involved with. We just unilaterally come up with a document, go record it. Not a good idea. It goes to court, we lose, right? If, if they don't agree to it, or it's not on the list of things state law says we can record, we just shouldn't record it, right? There are times where cities have gotten into trouble. And for instance, there was a city in Salt Lake County that at one point in recent history went to record. It was just, it seemed fine, right? They were going to record the, the transportation master plan where there was a master planned road that was going to go through this land and just record it against the land. And it's like, no, you can't do that, right? If, but if there's an, if you've adopted the transportation master plan and somebody comes in with a subsequent application, you can say, hey, as part of your application plan, you, just so you know, you've got to comply or show us how you're going to work with the, the transportation master plan. So sometimes you can do something in the right order at the right time, or you can mess it up and try to do it at the wrong time, right? Everything's fair game. If you've already passed it in advance, somebody comes with a subsequent application, no problem. Got to be careful though about recording, recording documents that you shouldn't record. If, yeah. So maybe the last thing I'll just go to super fast and then we can maybe another training, talk about zoning conditions and exactions a little more. But there's those best practice principles at the end. Maybe take some time, go through those. The main thing as a planning commission is you can do your most good upfront planning, right? And if you, the city staff and then the council, when it does work sessions or committees of the whole, that's where they kind of negotiate with people ahead of time. If we're going to do a zone change or a development agreement, planning commission's role is more than, you're not able at the end of the process to really do much of that, right? The negotiation has already been completed. One of the advantages of a planning commission of what you can do, however, if you see certain trends, and we've had different things happen recently, but you've had three different zone changes in front of you that did not have a development agreement with them. And if you're finding that, gee, you know, maybe we would have wanted to look at some design guidelines or something there. It's too late probably for that application. But one of the best things about wearing the two hats of looking at the applications and then also looking at potential new code, even though you can't apply it to the current application, you can in fact, look at that for a code change that you could apply to similar applications in the future. We can talk more about that another time, but just a, just a thought. And the, the other thing in addition to those six items there, I just wanted to add that if I were to add a seven, eight and nine, I would probably say another best practices are using the general plan as a filter and a guiding document for all the applications. And like I say, using the application to determine future text amendments. And then the main thing is sometimes with, the last point is, when there's an application in front of you and it's on for a public hearing, generally you want to wait till after the public comment to be able to discuss or bring up comments yourself, just so you don't inadvertently stifle any or prevent any or discourage any public comments. But that's all I've got for this evening.
Thank you. We will consider the briefing meeting closed and start our next meeting at 6:00 PM in about three minutes. Three minutes have now gone by very rapidly. And this is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of July 16th, 2024. All commissioners are present except Commissioner Jay Thomas. The first item is the review and approval of the minutes from our July 2nd meeting. If, are there any questions or comments about the minutes? If not, I will entertain a motion. If not, I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Gonzalez?
I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes from July second.
Commissioner Hatch?
I will second that.
Motion has been made and seconded for approval, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Second item on the agenda is Q E S Skyhawk regarding some street-facing bay doors. The application representative is Ken Worthing. Is Ken here? Taylor?
Yeah, so I talked to them and I let them know that it wasn't probably the most imperative that they be here tonight, so that's why they're not here. What we're looking at here is Q E S, it's a, an industrial building in an industrial zone. It's a site plan on an approved lot. And so typically those don't come to the planning commission, but the reason this is coming is that code does still require planning commission approval if they have a bay door facing a public road, which they do. We don't require a public hearing, but we just require this to be presented to the planning commission and for you to approve that. So here we can see the site, just off of Airport Road and Skyhawk Drive backs on to the Union Pacific Railroad spur as well. So this is subdivided about a year and a half ago. Lot twelve A and twelve B used to be combined into one single lot. Their proposal here is for two different buildings on this lot. And as we can see there, where the red circle is, is the bay door, which would be facing just that corner of the public right-of-way. It's actually a second door as well, that's smaller. So the elevation that would be facing is the south elevation that's outlined in red. You can just see there's a total of five total bay doors which face that public right-of-way. So you can see the way that they have addressed this is landscaping from the road to kind of block the visual appearance. So there's a number of trees along the right-of-way and then bushes and rocks, kind of boulders on the backside of that. So those should provide some of the coverage for the lower visual. And then the trees, when they're full of leaves, will block visually from the higher viewpoint. As you can also see, it's very small area that faces on that public road, this is also in an industrial area. So probably only gonna be industrial traffic in the vicinity primarily. We did take this to the DRC, they looked at it, they didn't seem to have any concerns and we as staff are recommending approval of the bay door. I'm happy to answer the questions you may have.
Questions, comments, Commissioner Hatch?
For the record, I think this is a silly code, but unless anyone wants to say anything.
I want to say something.
Go for it.
I went and looked at this piece of property and I think they could put those bay doors anywhere they want on that building and it wouldn't make any difference to anybody. It's just a totally industrial area. Yeah, so I'm, I'll, I'll vote yes.
I'll go ahead and make a motion unless there's someone that feels differently. Okay, I move that the planning commission approves street-facing bay doors for Q E S Skyhawk at forty-six fifty-eight West Skyhawk Drive with the landscaping shown in this report.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
I will second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favors say aye, any opposed? Thank you. I have a number three, public hearings with planning commission recommendation to the city council for final action. Jordan Valley Station. Mr. Murray?
I think Taylor's gonna give the main presentation there, but just before he starts giving the presentation, this is an interesting nuance of state law where, as we were talking about, all development agreements, unless they're just fulfilling an agreement that was already in place, like a reimbursement agreement where money has already been appropriated. All regular development agreements, including amendments to those development agreements, which require legislative approval by the council, are land use regulations and under current state law, wasn't the case years ago, but over the last several years, it is the case, all land use regulations, which this is, require a public hearing in front of the planning commission before going to the council for consideration. So even though this is a, a very small procedural type thing, it's not substantive as Taylor will describe, it still has to go through this process. So if it appears to be laborious and overkill, from a practical point of view, it, it really is. But from a legal point of view, we just need to do it. So anyway, Taylor will take it from there.
Yeah, as Duncan mentioned, you can see we have a theme to tonight's meeting. So our applicant is Jeff Fitek and it's an amendment to the Jordan Valley Station T S O D master development agreement. And really the purpose is to extend the expiration date on that agreement. Just a brief overview, this master development agreement was approved in September of two thousand and ten. We amended it in March of two thousand and thirteen and then amended it a second time on September twenty-third of two thousand and fourteen. Has a fifteen-year expiration period, so the current expiration date is September twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-nine. So we've still got about five years. But the nature of development, how long some of these large projects can take to come to fruition, the applicant wishes to just push that expiration out. It's a term of fifteen years from when it's approved, so that would be pushing out the overall expiration date, another ten years to two thousand and thirty-nine. The agreement, as Duncan mentioned, is under the purview of the council, but state code does require recommendation from the planning commission, and so that's what we're seeking tonight. We are recommending approval of this. I know the applicants here, if you have any questions for them, but if not, I'm happy to answer the questions you might have as well.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? Okay, then we will open this now to public hearing. So anybody present who wishes to address this application? State your name, please, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Alec Taylor. I am here representing Boulder Ventures Development, which is the developer for this project. I believe we had a presentation to present.
Yeah, we, we do have a presentation, if you want to give that to them, you can. I was gonna talk to you before, like, it, it's very, census is limited to just the date, we didn't want to confuse it with what we're-
The short of it is, the, the real purpose of the extension request is just to allow us as developer to continue what we've done for the past thirty years in West Jordan, since our success with Jordan Landing Mall, which is to continue to provide Class A quality product in the West Jordan City. We're very proud of the Jordan Valley Station community. Today, we've, we've built the Novi Apartments, we've built Upper West Apartments, we've built Starbucks, we've got Momentum, which is our most current, our most recent construction to date. All of them are very quality products, they're built to the market trends of their days. By allowing us to extend the development agreement out, it'll give us as developer the time needed to thoughtfully prepare and plan each of the next phases going through the property and allow us to, to build something where we as the developer are proud of and that we can be proud of as, as a city as well.
I'd like to ask a couple of questions. How, how? So, thank you. Thank you. We'll cut, we'll have you back if we, if we have, when I have my questions. Now, public hearing. That was part of the public hearing. Is there anybody on the phone or who has joined us by Zoom who wishes to comment? Please identify yourself.
Yeah, there's somebody on Zoom, but there's not a hand raise, so.
Person on Zoom, you may raise your hand to be acknowledged if you wish to.
I don't see a hand indicated.
Thank you. Ms. Davis, public hearing is now closed and I will ask my question. What's the current occupancy with what you have there already? And that's question number one. Question number two is just from a very broad perspective, what's left to be done in this development?
Yeah, Commissioner Winn, that's a great question. So currently on this, if you could move the slides to the project themselves. So we have Novi, which is a two-hundred-and-seven unit project in the station. Novi is about ninety-five, ninety-six percent occupied right now. And we have Upper West, which is two-hundred-and-seven units in the project, and that's about ninety-four, ninety-five percent occupied right now. Momentum, which is our most recent addition, which received C O V in January of this year, currently is about fifty percent occupied. And we expect to be fully leased up by the end of the year. Going forward in the future, if you can move to the next slide, Taylor. We have about fifty percent of the land in the total project developed to date. Highlighted in green on your screen, you'll see the remaining entitled land that we built out of phases. The entomies we have in place are fungible, we moved around, but we have the ability to, to construct another six-hundred-and-seventy-six residential units and about a hundred thousand square feet of commercial retail.
Thank you. What's the current occupancy of Starbucks?
Fully occupied.
Okay.
Very busy.
Great. Other questions or comments, commissioners? Thank you, sir. If there are no other comments, I think we're ready to hear an emotion. Commissioner Roberts?
I will make that motion. I move that the planning commission recommend approval, positive recommendation of the amended Jordan Valley Station development agreement to the West Jordan City Council, subject to the requirements of approval listed in this staff report.
Commissioner Gonzalez?
I will second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Commissioner Allen?
I move to adjourn.
Motion accepted.